This conference will now be recorded.
All right, we'll call to order the Monterey Select Board on February 6th at 6:03 PM. We have the whole board, all three members present here in Town Hall, as well as the administrator. Is Chris coming in? Does he want to? I know he had said he wanted to come on the earlier side, so. I'll knock that out.
Chris, you coming?
Yep, I am. Got a good one. Yep. Okay, shut up. Sorry, everyone.
No worries, we're just starting. We're just starting. We're here, thank you for joining us, Chris. We're here to discuss early voting hours and we'll date some times and anything else that you want.
Okay, great. Today, I was in touch with the Elections Division and got some clear guidance on all of the mandated early voting, in-person voting, a bunch of different important deadlines and dates. So, this was all posted to the website, to Town's website today, including a sample ballot, or sample ballots. The election is March 5th. Excuse me. And I can provide you guys with a copy of this if anyone would like it for their own personal records. You're required to have at least one weekend day of early in-person voting in the range of February 24th through March 1st. February 24th is also an important deadline for online voter registration, in-person voter registration, vote by mail registration, and that is also required by the state to have office hours. And then again, from 3:00 to 5:00, and that's all occurring on February 24th. So that allows me to kill two birds with one stone. It'll take care of our weekend, early weekend voting mandate, and that will take care of all of the other deadlines that happen to fall on that date. So that'll be a total of four extra office hours.
I thought I had understood that we needed to have four weekend hours on each of the weekends that occurred during the early voting period, which is like 10 days from...
So the early voting period is March 24th, I'm sorry, February 24th through March 1st.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if you have a calendar in front of you. I don't.
That's actually, it's Saturday, it's Friday.
Yeah, that's exactly right. One, one. And here's the other thing.
I think there was at least one time that we had weekends. This is all, is it all kind of the Vote Act?
Yeah, and I read it back over that MGL thing today, but it is confusing because there's different types of elections, so I'll just go with what they said.
Sure, and let me make one more additional comment about that. Approaching it through the MGL is not the way to go. Call, call the Elections Division, that's on the mass.gov. They are thorough, it's public, it's free, they always answer the phone. It's a really, really good resource, and it's, they are the people that set those rules, so it's definitive. Uh, that takes care of the, all the early in-person stuff. Let me just read my notes here.
And we have, we need additional hours besides just the Saturday, right? Or is four-hour required because of your hours per week?
Yeah, so my regular office hours will constitute the required amount of early in-person weekday voting.
Gotcha.
And we also put that on the website.
Great.
Um, I can break down those numbers. Good, good, I'm glad.
I'm trusting you here.
Made a lot of progress this week with preparing for the election. A large part of my workload these past couple weeks has been preparing the early voting applications that everybody in the state was mailed. I processed all of those in the computer system. They still need to be sent out in, you know, paper ballots in the mail. That deadline for that, I can't remember that one right off the top of my head. We have some, we have some time on that. We're not even getting close to any real important deadlines as far as things that have to be done. Today, I pulled out the ballot box and opened it all up and checked all the operation of it, found out it was made in 1933. It works. I reset the counter, I ran five, you know, mock ballots through it, everything works in it, so I was a little concerned about that. My biggest area that I need to spend some more time on is my election workers. I've gathered a fair amount of names. The next step is to have an in-person meeting here with all those people that expressed interest in it and kind of put together a roster of people, and I would like to start working on that the later part of this week and early next week. So, I will basically make my selections of who I want to be my election workers, have the list forwarded to you guys. You will then have the choice to appoint them or not. Then I swear them in, and congratulations, you're an election worker. Uh, I went to a really comprehensive election worker training with somebody from the Secretary of State last week. It was, I was there for three and a half hours or so, really, really comprehensive. And the lady who voted on her name was Bridgette Murphy from the Secretary of State's office. She gave me an hour of her time afterwards and answered questions one-on-one for an hour afterward, so I really learned a lot at that. The election worker roster is kind of the biggest missing piece at this point.
Do you think that you have enough people?
Um, I have enough. There was enough interest expressed when I put the article in the Monterey News and other people that have just expressed interest in passing the town. So yes, I do think that I will be, I will have enough election workers. Unfortunately, Gary Shaw and, and his wife are not going to be around for the boil of pregnancy, they're going to be away. I'm hoping that they can be part of a meeting that I'm going to hold for new people because they've been election workers for so long that they can, you know, help answer any questions that other people might have. Yeah. Other than, there's a couple little things. Other than that, you know, I have to figure out catering, we supply food. This last week's training and conference, I really, really learned a lot. I've been working closely with the clerk over in Sheffield now. I have what they call a UACAB vote, which is an overseas voter act. I have to mail a ballot to France. There's a couple anomalies in processing the early mail-in voting. Things that kind of, you know, curveballs and I didn't quite know how to proceed, and they've been helping me a lot with that. So, baseline here is, I'm feeling like I'm pretty well-prepared for the presidential primary election.
Yay.
Did we set the police to go? Or did we say last time we would just have it?
I can, sorry, go ahead, sorry.
Well, so they, if you do get a police officer, we have a detailed read.
No, no, I meant, we have to, as I recall, the Vote Act requires us to say that there will be an officer. And what we did last year was charge the chief with assigning that duty and getting someone. But we, we have to say, the Select Board has to say, there will be X number of officers at the election.
I did communicate that with Brian.
Oh, we have to do it.
The times, the polls, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Unfortunately, an officer doesn't need to be present while all votes are being counted as well. And the rate for that officer is $50 an hour. So, I ran that one by.
Longer than eight, okay.
Yeah, 13 hours plus however long it takes to count, and however long it takes to count is how long it takes to count. I asked Elections Division that specifically, and they confirmed that they do need that portion of, if the polls are still open, you can have public observers at that point and a police officer or, or constable.
Okay. So you've got the dates, you've got the hours, it's all posted.
Yep.
And the only thing we have to do, I guess, is confirm that, because I think that our name is, like, Select Board is on MGL, so we have to accept those hours, I believe?
That part I'm not sure about.
I, I know. Do you want me to pull up MGL?
I have it.
You have it? I think it's three.
Yeah. A lot of it refers to local, local election officials, which in our case is Chris.
Right, except that.
Should we vote to accept it? Sure. Yeah, you can't hurt.
They, they being the Elections Division, also said after you set your early in-person, early in-person voting dates and times, just let us know because we also post that at the state level as well.
Yes, they do on the website. But yeah, Susan, I recall what you recall, and I don't think it can hurt.
Yeah, for municipalities with less than 5,000 registered voters, the City Council of the City or Board of Selectment or Select Board of the Town may, at a public meeting held not less than 20 days for the first day of early voting period, vote to provide early voting hours of not less than blah blah blah. But, so that does sound like it does, to me. So, I will make.
Welcome, Chris, just read, sorry to interrupt you, but can Chris just, you've referred to when the early voting hours are, but can you just tell us?
In other words, say it, so it'll be on the record, and then we can move to accept those hours.
I could, I need to just grab my calendar because my, actually, if somebody could just tell me my schedule. Thank you. So, for the record, the early in-person weekend hours will be on Friday, Friday, I'm sorry, February 24th, and that will be from 9:00 to 11:00 AM, and then from 3:00 to 5:00 PM. And then my office hours during that period of March, or February 24th to March 1st are?
Monday, February 26th, 9:00 to 2:00, and Thursday, February 29th, 9:00 to 2:00.
And those regularly scheduled office hours will satisfy the requirement of the weekday early in-person voting hours.
You meant Saturday, February 24th, right?
Yes.
You said Friday, so I just thought I would clarify that. Okay. Okay, I move to accept the hours specified by Chris as the early voting hours for the federal primary election and state primary election to be held on March 5th, 2024.
All right, is there any other discussion? We'll call a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, so it's unanimous approval. Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you for your fairness and clarity.
Sure, any other, you know, questions, just reach out to me.
I have one, and I don't want to detract from the upcoming election, but do you have a sense if Monterey needs to mail in ballots for our town?
That's a very interesting question, I've been thinking about that too. I need to do a little bit more research on that. Maybe the case is that it's left up to us whether we choose to do that or not. We've definitely got enough time to research that and make that choice. I will definitely put that on my midterm radar.
Yeah, no rush, no rush. I know you have this one first, but I know, I just know, you know, the state's really pushing to mail in, but I think we do have, like you said, the local option.
Yep. Now, they talked a lot about that at the conference that I was at, and every state agency that has anything to do with elections is watching this, this year's cycle very closely because the early voting rules and all the mail-in voting loosening of the rules was done pretty hastily because of the pandemic. Now that we're kind of out from under that and a little less under the gun, they, the state of Massachusetts and I'm sure federal elections, people also are looking to the numbers of how many people are requesting those early ballots. How, you know, are they really helping? You could see, you know, tweaks in the system after this year's election cycle. People are watching closely. Thank you.
Yep, sure.
I'm also going to move to that the Select Board direct the chief of police to assign one officer for the duration of the election and vote counting for the March 5th election. In cooperation, hours in cooperation with the.
Second. Any other discussion?
No.
We'll call a vote on the morning.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, so it's unanimous approval. Let us know if you need anything else.
Oh, I will.
And, and, you know, give a shout out if you need help either with organizing all that mail-in stuff, because there was just an article in the paper about how much extra work it is for everybody, so.
It's a hot topic. It really, it really front-end loads the workload of the election weeks, weeks out. Now, that being said, in theory, everybody who is voting early by mail or in person won't be coming to the doors on Election Day, but
It doesn't, you're going to sit there, right? You're still going to have to count.
That's also one of the things that is, you know, being debated right now, the people that forget they mailed in a vote or they got a wrong, you know, party ballot in the mail and now they want to change, so it's going to be interesting.
You look, you sound like you're on it. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
You too.
Nice, thank you, Chris.
So, the next item is the budget, which I think we've been going heavy on the past couple weeks. We probably
I didn't print one of those.
Yeah, looking at the whole agenda, maybe we won't go line by line like we've been doing. I also would say that the Finance Committee asked us to schedule a meeting with them.
Do we have some proposed dates?
I think they proposed a Select Board meeting.
Next week.
Next Thursday.
Do we have anything else scheduled tonight? And I think that probably makes sense. Yeah, they said starting at 6:30, which is fine, we can always, at the very least, do minutes. And I assume there will be other business.
Oh, you mean beforehand, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you, do you think we're likely to have more finalized fire companies slash fire department members?
Well, I think we're working on it. I wouldn't mind taking a couple minutes to talk about the meeting that you sent out.
Yeah, so I wouldn't talk about it yet because Sean has a meeting with the members tomorrow night, and because I want anything to.
Right. All right, then, from my information, do you know how many, typically how many events they do a year? You know, how many calls?
Events, last year, 166.
There's a, there, there should be a data
Well, I.
over the years, right, that someone has?
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, no.
I mean, I know that there is.
Yeah, I know, I don't have to print them. I just looked in the town report.
Yeah. Yeah, but.
But yes, we can go on that I am responding thing.
Because, you know, you take the request for the meeting, I think, staffing, the staffing, I think there should be more discussion about it. You take the lease agreement. If you took the number you gave me there, you know, per call, just over a year, if you took 160 events or calls, by the, it's $1,700 in labor per call. You're going to get questions on how many we're doing. I mean, there's got to be some more discussion. I know we need to do something, I'm not, you know. And that's not included lease or the other costs. It's going to be well over $2,000 per call.
Geez, so the ambulance at $1,000 a call is a good one?
I was just going to ask, because I knew you were.
Yeah, yeah. Looks like this guy, he can put the fire truck on the trailer. So, I mean, I, you know, I'm glad we're doing the finance, but there's got to be some more discussion. We got to do some, you know, it's a sticker shot.
But maybe we'll have better actual numbers after that to be able to have that discussion.
Yes, Sean said that he's meeting with the officers tomorrow, so compensation, I should have something on Thursday, and then we're all meeting tomorrow.
The lease.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the lease, I shared the information with Susan, the spreadsheet, I didn't send, I could send it to you just, and, you know, it's it's more than, if you go and you go by their, their spreadsheet, you know, their budget, you know, it's roughly $6,800 a month, which is three times what they're paying us right now.
But we're paying them.
Yeah. I can send yours, you know, and then there's the question about, they have money. There's been discussion with the fire company and myself about if they have training, we should pay for the training because it's for an employee, you know, our employee. So that would have to be looked at. You know, my question is, you know, the public's going to have a lot of questions. Melissa, do you know what the approximate percentage of the calls that go out of other townships?
I don't have that number.
You mean how many mutual?
Yeah, yeah, how many mutuals?
But I, I'm not, the other question is of the mutual aids, because mutual aid can be.
That was quite.
Well, yeah, that we're there also.
Yeah.
And, you know, so that makes it harder to ascertain.
Well, I think it's more for just knowing what the data is.
No, I, I'm not saying we shouldn't know the data, I'm never going to say that. I think we can establish, I'm always going to say more data.
I think there was one time you said, I just, data would necessarily solve the problem.
Okay, that, that.
I could be wrong.
Well, sometimes you can't. Like, sometimes it's a question of something else, of like preference or, I don't know, practical behavior or whatever, and data's not going to help either.
So, like I said, we do have a fairly full agenda. Aside from the budget, we'll meet with the Finance Committee week, we've been doing deep dives into it. I do note that Susan wrote up a page, oddly enough, for the first time in our time together on the board, I wrote up a page separately and independently. So there's two pages. Mine is not a finished product or anything, it's really just more questions.
And I was really, part of it was I wanted to clarify both what I meant and to see, I wanted to make sure that I correctly understood what you were saying. Which isn't all, like, we somehow, we always think we're clear and we always think we understand the other person's bit clearer, and yet, sometimes, in fact, what we understand is not what they meant.
Well, I think my general point, just through these questions, is there, we shouldn't be in the situation that we're in. So when we're being asked, should we be budgeting money for the audit or using the money from last year or two years ago or however at all, or should we be using the highway storm money from Bidwell Park from October of '22, or should we not? Kind of my point through these questions is, we shouldn't be in this spot in the first place. And if we followed the more standard practices, as I've kind of laid out, of, of letting things go to free cash and then using free cash the following year instead of bouncing around between, we wouldn't even be in this situation that we're in, in the first place.
Which situation is that, though? Because I'm not.
Yeah, so the.
It seems to me like we were only talking, this, for this STM, it seemed like we're only talking about money from this year being reallocated. Is that, am I incorrect?
I, so it was from October of the prior year.
Prior fiscal year.
And it got carried forward.
Okay.
Which, there were two things that went wrong there. One is, it wasn't a special article, and Eric, I.
This is the storm damage one.
Yeah.
Okay.
It was never a special article, there was a miscommunication with the accountant. I think it was pretty clear. For whatever reason, it was put in as a special article, even though a line was mentioned. This new warrant, I think it's very, very clear what's going on, which is good. That being said, then it was carried forward when it probably shouldn't have been carried forward, and so here we are. And now we're having this discussion of should we use it, or should we wait to use it until the following, following year? My kind of point is, it should already be in free cash, if you read through this.
But I, it sounds like it should have been in free cash.
Twice.
It was an error, yeah.
Twice.
And that's a different problem.
And then with the audit, kind of my point again is, we shouldn't be making decisions because it already should have been rolled into free cash. So, yes, I think it's hard, I understand where you and Frank are coming from when you say we have the money, why not use it? And then, and then, you know, use money from free cash and then not be able to use that for a whole, it seems clumsy and not efficient. And it is, and I'll give you that, and I can see where you're coming from. I think, though, the more we do this, things that just are not typical, like usually you raise money for your operating budget, then a year you take up, love to a free cash, you use that at your special town meetings. If you didn't do something here, you don't encumber it, if you are done with a project, you don't carry it forward, we wouldn't be in these situations, and so I think we've talked about this before, we don't need to go into depth tonight.
I'm going to agree with you, by the way, just for clarity. I agree that ideally, the special, there shouldn't be as much carryover as there is. The only point I was trying to make is that if there's a projected overage in an existing line item from the current year, and a lot of times there won't be, I mean, certainly if we're having a meeting in November from the fiscal year that started in July, you're really probably not in a position to say, oh yeah, there'll be an overrun this line, unless something radical changed. Like, you had someone who was on a family plan who left, and in that, in that window, got someone who's a single person, so you don't, right? Like, that would be a big cost savings. But I think by and large, that's not all that likely to happen. But if you do have a line where there's a projected overage, that's a safe line to take from, like, in December or November, I would not want to ever draw from salt and sand or winter storm or, or winter overdone, that would be crazy, right? But if you're going within the fiscal year, that seems to me to make more sense to transfer from one line item. But I agree with you, stopping the carryover practice would be very sensible. The, the one you're talking about, yeah.
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 Yeah, and I can see that the, within the year transfers, it just almost raises the question, or really hammers home, should we be voting each line, or should we be voting entire sections and/or the whole budget? Because there are towns, if you vote the whole section.
You have freedom of delivery.
Without calling a town. And I think, the long. The long story short here is, I think we're all under the impression that people don't want to come to a special town meeting to move 5,000 from, well, we didn't need that for unemployment insurance, but we did need it for cleaning up from a storm. It's like we have a $5 million budget, people don't want to see their taxes go up, they don't necessarily, and there are certain things we're required to do by law, but we're really and by the way, when we sent a warrant to town council, one of her responses was like, and it was just exploratory and inquisitive, it wasn't saying you should do this, but like, could you make it with internal transfers and reserve fund transfers to the end of the, you know, to the end of fiscal year? Because I think it's, it, no one enjoys these special town meetings to do these little things. So, one way or another, I think we're all headed in the same direction, it's just how to get there. If, and, you know, I don't know if other people have other comments, but like I said, probably we'll keep the budget discussion. If, and, you know, I don't know if other people have other comments, but like I said, probably we'll keep the budget discussion a little bit shorter in the.
And I'm happy to look over it, cause I, I'm, I'm real less.
It's interesting that every meeting, kind of, we both made one paper here.
Yeah, it's really funny. Is, is your one, did your, your own or a response to mine, I just.
Well, I didn't have yours.
Oh, oh, right, yeah, of course not.
And it's, by the way, it's not finished. It's, some of it's just questions.
No, I'm just sort of thinking, yeah, I get it. And I was, like I said, I was just trying to clap, make sure I had clear what you were saying and just clarify what I was trying to express, just so we have a little clarity because. But yeah, okay, so we're postponing further budgetary discussion?
Yeah, we'll meet.
But do we need to make any decisions about the warrant?
Yes, that, so that's our next, I read them, is the warrant. So, some minor changes from, from last week, mostly wordings. Melissa sent us all an email about. Where we might take money from this year and, and it's just really not there, per se. So, we didn't, we, we're taking, we're taking out of the storm damage article. Maybe I'll just go through them quickly and see if we have any, you know, just to find more of you, cause that number. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of forty thousand or any other sum from free cash to the FY twenty-four transfer station operations account or take any other action. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of ten thousand dollars or any other sum from free cash to the FY twenty-four IT expenses account or take any other action relative there too. See if the town will vote to transfer the sum of three thousand three hundred and thirty-two or any other sum from the storm. Damage Article One account approved at the October fifteenth, twenty twenty-two special town meeting to the FY twenty-four community center operations account or take any other action relative there too. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of thirteen hundred dollars or any other sum from the storm damage Article One account approved at the October fifteenth, twenty twenty-two special town meeting to the FY twenty-four meeting warrants, printing and postage account or take any other action relative there too. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of one thousand seventy-four sixty-four cents or any other sum from free cash to FY twenty-four school community center account to pay wages of the prior year or take any other action.
Say what?
There was some comment on the, the warrant you sent up, the copy, date, the date on that.
Yeah, town council said we don't need that nine tenths, so.
Yeah, so that was always the understanding of a prior year bill. What the most recent advice is, is that if we had the money to pay it and we just didn't get it. Then we don't need nine tenths. You'd need nine tenths if it was over budget that year.
Oh, okay, alright.
So you already hit zero, you didn't have money to pay the bill. And yeah, that's mostly the advice. Melissa and I discussed it briefly this afternoon.
In agreement with it.
And you never need to say nine tenths or two thirds. We do it and I think it's very helpful to people. But if between now and March second, we learn that you do need nine tenths, that's fine. The moderator can say we need nine tenths, we can just treat it like that. It never needs to be on here. In the case that we don't need the nine tenths, we're not gonna put it in here. And then the last one I'm gonna read is.
Thanks for taking care of that, guys.
To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of a thousand dollars or any other sum from the storm damage Article One account approved at the October fifteenth, twenty twenty-two special town meeting to the FY twenty-four transfer station operations account to pay for a bill of the prior year or take any other action. I have just one fussy comment, which is Article three. We have a point zero zero, which we don't have in the other.
Gone now. I heard delete the.
Quick look at the zoning bylaw, which is very similar to what we saw at the special town meeting. Last time, which we didn't deal with, the only changes that I'm aware of are, it previously said in two point two point three, and normal setback dimensions. It said normal in there, normal power removed. And they deleted in section two point three, insert provided map of the property, because that was erroneous.
Okay.
Doesn't even have any other comments, or there, otherwise we'll motion to approve it and.
I'm only curious what the difference between the attachment and Article seven is. It looked like it was the same.
Article, the attachment is track changes, which Donna.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Which Donna recommended, so in theory it should be a hundred percent same, just denoting.
It shows people what's different.
Yeah, and unfortunately. Although I think it's really helpful, it kind of. Doesn't always work, because after last special town meeting, people were asking, why are we adding Fox Hill Road parcel? And they said, we're actually not. It's already in there. So, it's, it can be harder to consult the track changes, especially when they moved into the double underline. But in case anyone asks, we're not adding Fox Hill to this zoning bylaw. We're just adding landfill. And town garage first.
Okay. Okay.
Are there any other kind of questions, otherwise we'll go ahead.
I move that we accept the. Warrant for the March second special town meeting as amended, which I think just makes it different from being two zeros after decimal point.
Zach, start. Any other discussion? We'll call a vote?
Yes.
And yes, so that's, yeah, nice approval. Yeah, if we, if you can do that.
I hear.
We're actually a week ahead of schedule.
Yes.
Which is actually really helpful, because people get mailed a little bit earlier. They may all these days, you never know. Before we get into employment, which we can discuss, I just want to note, so that we're not anticipating an even longer agenda. The schoolhouse item, we don't have any updates.
Okay.
The last thing is that Donna is just working on it and she's gonna get us a very clear process of, if the town wants to sell the building, if the select board wants to sell the building, what are the steps? So we don't have anything on that for tonight.
Okay. Uh, do, do we need to act on sending a letter to the school system to find, cause she had raised that issue in the email, right?
So, it's a long history.
Okay.
Not too long, but. The honorary select board has previously done that. And payroll.
Okay.
A honorary select board has done that within the past ten years, and the school responded and was, ask all the emails if you want. The school responded, you don't need to do anything, you don't need to do anything, honorary owns and consults schools.
Okay.
That being said, Donna is coming in and taking a look at it.
Okay.
And I don't really know, maybe someone can ask someone from that previous board. I don't really know what ended up happening, because it certainly, to my recollection, didn't go before town meeting. So I don't know where it got hung up along the way. But if anyone runs into prior select board members.
Yeah, Ken doesn't get out much because of the.
Yeah, so, I don't know. Or go through the minutes, or talk to Melissa more about it. In any case, we're figuring out the process to sell it now.
I'll, I'll drop them though to Ken. I just need to get a photo, but I'll ask him in a minute.
And if Steve Weiss was also involved, I'll send that message to him, because it might have been different boards and it might have been different reasons.
Yes.
Or likely was.
Different boards. Melissa, do you have any recollection of why this, what happened with the schoolhouse? Because we have that letter from the board that you shared with us about, I mean, Susan and Frank each said they'd reach out to previous select board members too, but it ultimately never went to town meeting, right? It just never happened.
Yeah, not to my knowledge, but when they, when they made changes to the agreement, I think, or something. When they, when they, when they said they weren't gonna have a program there anymore. That's when all this came about. I know there was another letter, but they had to get all their stuff out of there and.
The, the school district. Yeah, it's partially new point, because Donna is just gonna tell us how she thinks we need to sell it.
Anyway, yeah. And i- in the end, whatever happened, it'll either happen again or not, like, right? I mean, they may just have decided it wasn't worth the effort to try to do it, or they, there just wasn't consensus or whatever.
Well, there was a, there was a letter back from the school that said something about they didn't need to do anything. Did you see that?
I did. I did see that. And then another thing I want to briefly touch on was just reviewing exactly the session minutes. As I said, I'm gonna work on it with Donna. I sent her a bunch of questions, which she responded to. And I'm just gonna take a first stab at it and she's gonna make, I'm gonna make sure that she is also comfortable with whatever.
Okay.
I do for redaction and then hopefully.
Oh, that's right, cause you were gonna ask.
I'm gonna do something.
And then she suggested you do so?
Well, I think it makes, I was thinking about it and I forget exactly what we agreed at the last meeting, but I think it makes a little bit more sense probably for me to do the work with her guidance and then have her sign off on it.
Okay.
Just because it's a lot of work and, and. Yeah, so she kind of gave me some guidance, I emailed back, cause I had questions. It's like very much a, a lot of it's a gray area. It's not so simple as, it's not like a black and white, so it's gonna take some nuance. But nothing for this meeting.
Okay. So wait, you just skipped employee handbook, you're coming.
I skipped that, only show that we don't have those two items and so we can spend time on employee handbook.
Okay.
That's, that's all in minutes. So. Employee handbook.
We need to set a deadline.
Well, the question is, what process, if any, do we need to follow to wrap up, or should we just approve and end this?
No, we need some, there need, there's some, I think last time I looked, there were some technical changes, but not much.
Um, it, it seemed to me the major thing that we need to do is go through and replace HR director with HR consultant to make sure the contacts are all correct. And we probably should have, have to look at it. Does council ever look for it?
Not that I know of.
Yeah, but I, I'm all for getting the fricking.
I'm, I'm forgetting Donna.
So let's set a process. Is the process replace HR director, the HR consultant? Send it to council and then.
I think there was one thing, there was about, there's a vehicle policy in there. I don't think we've ever had a, given a conversation. It wasn't complex. Which is, I, I would, I need to pull it out. I got the electronic version. You know, we could do that between six and six thirty next week.
Well, is that one in particular saying needs attention?
Well, I don't think it needs, I gotta reread it. It's been, you know, December since the last time I read it. We just need to make sure we all agree.
And I just want to point out, we can bring it, if we get the HR thing and approve from council, there is no reason we can't amend any piece of that we want. But at least we'll have an appropriate manual. And if we then, after that, if we want to have Colin Center give it another look to make suggested amendments, then we can amend.
Okay, that's fair enough.
I mean, it's a separate policy. It's a vehicle policy. We can amend that anytime we want. Do you want me to look through the whole HR directive thing?
Yeah.
And see if I can just, I'll just highlight them all and swap them out where it's appropriate?
Yeah, I mean, I am a little bit leery that they're not open to filling the roles that we have designated in the, in the handbook, because that's why they were very specific. They're consultant, not a director.
Well, so I, I, that, the job may include switching it out, but also noting the ones where it might involve actions in some other way. So what process, the one thing that I can foresee is if there is harassment or a complaint of some kind. That person may not reach out directly and we have to have a system, and that may be the one thing we actually need them to suggest.
Yeah, how do we do this?
How do we do this? It used to be a person went to the HR director, but you're the consultant. How do you recommend we put that in here? So there is an appropriate way for people to pursue an issue, should they have one.
Collins and office.
Right, I mean.
So are we asking Collins for help on finishing up?
I have that one piece, yeah.
That one piece and having taken a lot down.
Here, here's my two cents, right? I am, I've never put appropriate time and energy into this particular project, employee handbook, other than the policies that we've taken up one at a time. It's, it's always just been on the list and I haven't got it. So Susan, would you be comfortable taking it under your wing, using Mary as you feel necessary, using Donna as you feel necessary? And then, you know, and, and consulting with the board and the town administrator as you feel necessary? And then, um, fast track it?
Yeah.
Are you good with that?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, I, I, if you're willing to do that.
I'll send it, if I, I'll go through and I'll send you comments or whatever.
At the, at.
You have to bring in the meeting.
Huh?
Yeah, if your comments, if room to. Right, so they're part of the. Doesn't mean you can't give them to me. It just, it's not like I'm gonna get it done in twenty seconds. Oh, well, thank you. That's very kind.
So, so.
I will try and have it come with it in the next couple of weeks, cause I really just.
No, I understand, I understand a hundred percent. It's just always been haunting.
Um, also, by the way, I, I did reach out, I have a quick back, which I'm not surprised, cause it was today, but I did reach out to Mary to ask both if there had been any applicants or even informational requests and where they actually posted the job. We talked about places they would post, but that's not the same as where they did post, so, um, it, when I get her answer, I will.
Yeah, and then you can have a conversation with her, um, if you feel like it should be here and here and it's not, I think, feel comfortable, feel free to express that opinion.
What should be here and here and so? Oh, if, if, right, right, right.
If you feel like, you know, what we talked about, it was gonna be.
Remind, if I feel like they haven't posted places where we expect it to be posted, I will mention that.
Okay, so Susan will be in charge of the employee handbook and getting that to the finish line, which is much appreciated. The next item we have is town administrator items.
Administrator that's unanticipated or town administrator? So I'll just announce, I know I sent you guys all emails, but we got the grant, the table over there. Also got announced today that we got ten thousand five hundred dollars to buy a gear dryer for fire department. Jim asked me to let you know that he is meeting with the construction crew on Thursday afternoon on Bear Town and that the work there could start as early as February thirteenth.
Holy cow.
Yeah, they really wanna get going on it. Um, him and I are gonna work on a message to send out to everybody that they'd like, everybody to be off the road by seven fifteen if they can, just to avoid delays and stuff. More cooperation if the job will go. They're gonna have the proper police presence and everything.
So basically, February thirteenth, there will be a major snowstorm. Just put it on calendar, plan for it.
They're anticipating about four weeks, so.
It's only gonna take four weeks?
For this portion of the job.
Ah.
They're hitting up and.
This is like drainage work?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought you meant.
No, no. No, no, no.
That's a mile long, it's gonna take four weeks.
But I believe the end, I believe we are anticipating being done before June thirtieth. The town report, I sent it out to you guys in draft. If you just get me your comments with it, I think.
Which, so as a matter of fact, Frank, you're new to, you know, we already submitted the slideboard report, but just take a look and see, but, you know, review the whole thing.
Jim and I talked today, if you guys are in agreement, the mass works. Jim and I talked today. If you guys are in agreement, the Mass Works Reup for next year has been opened up. I'd like to call and ask some questions if he thinks that we could probably best use it from out here. If they agree that it's a.
With the COVID.
Where it's gonna forward to help the Braggos boss. If I'm gonna try to call someone from the state, see if that's acceptable. If they do, would you be okay with us?
Bring it on.
What was Courtney? Did Courtney talk about that?
Courtney mentioned that we might be able to get it from there, but since, since it's open right now to questions and the expressions of interest, I can actually ask questions and I can answer them, so.
Did you ever, did anybody ever reach out that Courtney'd ask her?
Okay.
Are there others?
Transport things, yeah, yeah.
My only question would be, you know, obviously if we can apply for the COVID and get it, that's great. My only other question would be, are there other obvious projects, like if, if they say, you know, the COVID doesn't really fit the criteria, and maybe that's for after the COVID. I can't think of any roads that.
Jim said no at the moment because he's got so much else going on.
Yeah.
So he felt that that would be the best use if, if they agree that it's acceptable. And then I just forgot to ask who adjusted. Did you get the two emails?
I did. I got three, actually.
Oh, you got three.
DocuSigns. The DocuSigns emails?
I wonder if there was another diagram signed.
Well, remember I did those other ones. CASL? Oh, I got a W nine E F T. Did I have it open yet? A W nine from the seat?
Right, that one should be the cultural council too. She said there was gonna be two. Okay, I just wanted to make sure you got them. Cultural council one, I think, needs to be signed before the twentieth.
Okay, yeah, I will get the C A S L form. And then what is.
Authorize signature.
State DocuSign form for local cultural council. But they all came in three months, so assume they're just over later.
You don't have to sign it tonight, but if you want to, I don't know if you guys have the suggested letter that's handed out, so if you do, I have the, I made.
China, Frank says sign it, I say sign it.
Yep, I'll say sign it.
So we all agree on signing.
And then the other thing Brian gave me is work due for our renewal. Berkshire County Law Enforcement Council Mutual Aid Agreement. Originally, it was certified in thirteen. We renewed it the second time in nineteen, and now we get to renew it in twenty twenty-four. Don't want someone to know that I can email that over if you want.
Yeah, that would be good, please. Thank you. Uh, do we need to clean out any of this, or is this all good? Thank you for the grants.
Yeah.
Maybe I have one more. See if we get it prepared for me.
Oh, that does.
Okay, now that one is, you know, the radio's just being written. I feel like someone else is showing us.
You all have the one.
Oh, yeah, but.
Did you go pay on my stuff?
No.
What?
No, you've been taking mine. Don't be laying me for that. Before we go on to minutes.
Yeah, I wasn't, oh, here they are, one page. I misplaced it.
Um, before we go.
My apologies.
That's okay.
I, I wasn't, I didn't worry about.
Before we go on to minutes, can I just, um, bring you up to date on my ambulance thing?
Yeah.
I did draft a letter, yeah, and I, I emailed it to both of you, right?
Yeah.
Um, because I, we may wanna, like, I just drafted a letter. I'm not saying that's the letter we should send. So I did talk to Kevin Wall, um, who basically reached out to the treasurer, Joe Cretschy. And, but I have not heard back from Joe about all the financial issues, because I haven't heard back from Joe yet. The only thing he, Kevin could clarify for me was, um, I did notice the discrepancy between fire chief Sean gave me a list of the mutual aid ambulance calls between January twenty twenty-three and now. And in the last quarter, we got that report that said no mutual aid calls, and in fact, there were two mutual aid calls during that period, both from New Marvo. And I asked Kevin about it, and he said, well, they get the report from the sheriff's office, and it they, they weren't on there. So I'm going to presume that there, it depends what you ask the sheriff's department for. It's possible that, like, I don't know how they organize that information, but there have been times when they've noted mutual aid calls and other times when they haven't. I would say it's possible, since those are the calls they're not answering, they may not always know, and we may not be able to count on their version of the report from the sheriff's office to give us accurate information on whether they're mutual aid calls.
If I had to guess, it's three different things, which would be probably the most common, and this is just a guess. But probably the most common mutual aid would be dispatch, no, Southern Berkshire is out and about. And so they know no one's at Southern Berkshire, so they called New Marlborough off the bat. Otis, Sanusfield, probably New Marlborough. That is one that we definitely care about, but I don't think Southern Berkshire's gonna tell us it's a mutual aid, because they weren't dispatched, and then. So the second one would be Southern Berkshire's dispatch to come to Monterey, and they say, no, we can't come, or they take too long, and then New Marlborough gets home. That's obviously the worst kind for us, and arguably the most preventable. Because who knows why that Southern Berkshire would come, whereas in the first kind, it's probably because the dispatcher knows they're out doing it. And then the third one would be, and I don't really remember in Monterey history, but it just, if you really, really wanna get it, I just have it coming. Would be Southern Berkshire comes, it's a multi-patient incident, New Marlborough also comes.
Great.
And I think we had one of those during the snowstorm on the Saturday after Christmas, when the highway truck, when a car slammed into the highway truck.
Oh.
I could be wrong. But I know that there were multiple patients, so maybe Southern Berkshire came, then New Marlborough came, and I can't, it's, it's my memory, but if I had to guess, it just might be worth coming into it with that context, that maybe we're talking about different things when we say mutual aid calls.
Well, there were, yeah, the two that Sean mentioned were ten seven and twelve twelve, so that wouldn't be the after Christmas one.
It wouldn't be.
No, but the bottom line is, yeah, there's a lot of clarity.
You're not getting that, you're not getting that.
But also, I'm not sure I can, I don't feel like it may be a reasonable thing to expect that, given the situation, that right, if they're not getting the call, for example, because dispatch knows they're already out, and is just asking somebody else. The only way they would know is if they then asked the sheriff's office, well, for our report, could you tell us what calls we weren't asked to do? And that seems like a kludgy system, so I'm, I, I feel like I have to forgive them for that. Nevertheless, all that said, um, they, according to Sean's records, they didn't respond to seven calls in twenty twenty-three. And, and by my count, the total calls were seventy-one calls, so eight of the seventy-one calls would be about ten percent of the calls were answered by, by mutual aid rather than SBA. I didn't mention that in the letter, but it's just for your education after running all these numbers. You know, I, I, it's clear that thirty-six percent is not tenable, is a yearly increase, which I expressed in the letter. And basically, I'm asking them to please make clear to us what their future plan is, because even if we agree to pay this, we can't continue to have thirty-six percent increases a year. It's not tenable. And I, we would like to see, to know both what their reimbursement percentage is, the number of calls that get reimbursed, and what the average reimbursement payment is, and what their plan is to improve that. Because, you know, he actually, Kevin did mention that calls were down last year, which I assume means compared to the previous year, although we went from seventy-four calls to seventy-one calls, so I'm not gonna really say that's a significant difference. But not by an appreciable amount. That's certainly within the ups and downs of a particular year. And, um, you know, now we're up to yeah, it's seven, at about seventy calls and seventy thousand, it's about a grand a call, I guess. But I just, I feel like, you know, Sheffield's got three times our population and three point six times as many calls. They are not paying three times as much money.
What do they pay?
Uh, bet, the previous year.
Was that an interesting question? Was everybody increased?
Yes, everybody, to the best of information and belief, everybody, uh, received that. And last year Sheffield paid sixty-two, uh, sorry, sixty-five to R fifty-one six. They, sixty-five eight, so I'll call it sixty-six to R fifty-two. So they, they are paying more, but they are by no means paying three times as much for their almost four times as many calls and three times as many people. Right? And I didn't mention this in the letter, but I did go back and look at what we wrote up about what we, when they asked us for money for the ambulance. They calculated that on the basis of population, but they are assessing us strictly on the basis of tax assessment, which they clearly changed because they thought it was more fair. But I, I don't think it's more fair, because that's a really big discrepancy, and honestly, we are not particularly it doesn't take them that much longer to come here as a deficit, I'd say it's about equities then.
Well, here's the, here's the thing too, right? When you get hurt, does it matter whether your house is assessed at nine million? Or three hundred thousand? And you need an ambulance, right? Because that's kinda what they're assessing. That's how they're determining how much we owe. If someone has a ten million dollar house, and then we owe whatever.
And they're assessing on the basis of what they think we have to pay.
Because I, I talked to Donna the other day, you know, this whole issue about, you know, our property's assessed very high. But twen- almost twenty-five percent of the residents in Monterey are poverty. He said, you know, because, you know, we just had, I took, he had given me a book about some of the real estate transactions, and I took it back from there. That's a god to ask. You go, yeah, our properties are set very high, very high for captive income. But then there's this level there, twenty, twenty-five percent, and then, you know, that's why you got twenty-five, thirty-five, that's picking up there, isn't it? I think. So it's, you know, it's not quite, you know.
I will make one more point about this topic, and I think we'll come back to the letter next week. I know I have a couple, uh, I wanna review it.
And I expected that there would be changes. I just figured it would be easier to start with something.
Yeah, no, it's good. One thing just to keep in our minds, as we talk about mutual aid calls, is some level is certainly acceptable. And when New Marlborough's ambulance is out, Southern Berkshire, who we mostly foot the bill for, goes to New Marlborough. Right? Or they go to Otis maybe, or Sanusfield. And I don't know the numbers on that. Also, you should know that New Marlborough has an agreement with Southern Berkshire, where when Southern Berkshire comes ALS, New Marlborough pays a fee per call, because New Marlborough has a BLS ambulance. So if Southern Berkshire intercepts ALS from New Marlborough's ambulance, New Marlborough pays a fee to Southern Berkshire. All that mess being said, some of it is there is gonna be mutual aid, and it's acceptable with police and fire, and it's certainly acceptable with ambulance. It's just if there was a real problem, like, okay, we had a hundred calls and Southern Berkshire only came to fifty, why are we mostly paying Southern Berkshire?
Agreed, and I, I, I don't know where that cutoff point is. I, I kinda don't feel like ten percent is terrible. Ten, ten percent mutually. Maybe it is.
We're gonna hear a lot about that mutual aid, when we look at the fires, the compensation, the fire department, and all that.
And, and, and I don't know how you work out a fair, you know, like, a fairer system, because when you, when New Marlborough responds, because Southern Berkshire can't, they don't. They're not getting remunerated, but neither does our fire department when it responds, so.
I can tell you how you come up with a more fair system, though, for emergency response. Not necessarily, but the state is interested in schools, and so they do their whole thing on schools, and they have the state, you know, you have your minimum required, I'm trying to remember it all from this fall, right, when we learned it all in preparation for that vote.
Yep.
The minimum required local contribution, and then when you get a regional school district, like Southern Berkshire or Berkshire Hills, they use that number to decide how much you owe into the district. And it takes into consideration a lot of different variables. Right now, if the state were involved, they might be saying, okay, this is Southern Berkshire Regional Ambulance, and we've come up with a number that Monterey owes, and Sheffield owes, and Eggermont owes. And we might still disagree with it, but it's probably gonna be better.
Well, it's gonna have more than one factor. It's gonna include things like the number of calls and the population, as well as the tax assessment, instead of just that one.
So if you talk to a state rep, you might just say, this ambulance thing is not really working out, and maybe the state needs to get involved in regionalization.
Well, the state had a thing, you know, about contributing for doing regionalization consolidation stuff, but we talked about it, it came up with the Monterey, when we were talking Monterey Park, and they said, we'll do this one this week. Just not, nothing to do that. But it was that kind of.
This is the kinda thing that may take some planning.
It does take planning, because, I mean, you know, um, a dollar, that's a good move.
Well, I generally agree with the letter, and we'll come back to it next week, and I, I think whether or not they actually change, I mean, if nothing else, this year is warrant, where next year we get that thirty-six percent, and we say, now we can't, like, we can't.
Well, I think, I go back and ask them if it could be stretched out to twelve percent.
I mean, I'm pretty sure the issue is based on last year's conversations, that they, right, they have this, it takes this to run the company. They're getting basic reimbursements, and the towns have to make up the rest. Well, I want to see what you're gonna do to make, and he did tell me they're using a claims company or.
Yeah, you're, you're just like a collection company.
Yeah, which is fine, if they're doing their job, but what if they're not? What if, the, the problem is you've chosen a bad collection company, and they're just not doing a good job. You're paying them money to do it, and they're not collecting, or they're taking too big a percentage, the result of which is, we're having to pay the difference. And at some point, that's not tenable. So I, I wanna see.
It'd be interesting to see how many you're doing.
Yeah, I do think maybe I should alter the letter too, to bring in the issue of, like, not just using tax assessments, which I, because I just don't think it's fair. I don't think it's fair that Sheffield has three times our population, four times our call numbers, and you're barely paying one. They're paying what, like, ten percent more?
By the way, last year, when Susan especially kind of led this, and we kinda discussed it. We, we would have liked to say do it by population, but we never really did. We, Susan came up with a formula that met somewhere in the middle. And they turned it down without really the second time. It's just a bummer, because that's not the way you pay for schools, and it shouldn't be the way you pay for ambulances, and.
Like you said earlier, whether it's behind the ten million dollar house, it's three hundred thousand, they're still coming, you know?
I, I think basically they use that because they felt it was more fair than just population, and it was simple. I think the main reason was, it's an established method, and it's simple.
Established method for what?
Um, for fairer assessment than just population, right, because it takes into account the differences in communities. But I don't think it's sufficient. Simple, you know, a simple rule can be simple to make and simple to enforce, but that doesn't make it a good rule. Right? And that's across the board for almost anything, and I think this would be another example of it. But their, their answer was, this is our fee, pay it, or pay it for the service, or don't pay it.
Okay, minutes. Minutes.
Yay.
I think there's three short minutes without too many comments, maybe we can do it, so we would start with one eleven.
I hope you don't mind that I corrected something that you said. Or that, that you had said, but it was on here in a way that wasn't clear, so I fixed it. I'm good with the changes.
Okay, uh, I'll move that we approve the January eleventh minutes.
A second amendment.
As amended.
As amended, wait a second, and we'll vote.
Yes.
And yes, to unanimous approval of January eleventh. And so we'll move on to January eighteen.
Okay, so the first, the very first change, which one?
Uh, signing.
Uh, the very first change on one eighteen, we both tried to do the same thing, so pick one. It should say cover the custom of insulating, it's not insulating twice, what the heck happened? It like repeated things like four times, it's very weird. We can fix any of this?
Yes. Just duplicate it.
Um, that, so the sentence with Dennis, Dennis said that we have tried the cupboard replacement that in the past, and we we have been unsuccessful, okay, as they look for high glass, and we do not meet the criteria. But now it's do no apostrophe T, I'm not sure how that now reads.
And we do not meet the criteria.
Six eight at the end, how would that actually read?
Okay. Sure, you, help at the transfer station. The director of operations, and someone else to cover, including asking staff members.
Great, but it's the end of that next sentence.
The board agreed that during bad weather events, the director of operations will make a decision about whether to close the transfer station.
Help cover the vacancy. Is, are those deleted or not deleted?
Yeah, I think, right, we'll delete that.
Yep.
Yeah.
I think basically, it's two different issues. If it's a staffing issue.
Yep.
We'll try to resolve it. If it's a weather issue, just the director of operations will just make the call.
Right, that's what I understood too, it just didn't read that one. Did we ever hear back about the tree thing?
Which one?
Sure, one that's mentioned here.
Yeah, Kevin West.
Yeah, there was two slightly different issues, but assuming you're talking about the Kevin one.
Yeah.
I think I forwarded to you during last meeting, so maybe you got lost.
Yeah, probably, I know.
Yeah.
But, um, Kevin is on it. He's been thinking long and hard about how to move forward. But the gist of it is that the town will not be liable if a tree from private property falls into the river. We actually could be liable if a tree from the town right away did fall into the river, but because it's not private property, we wouldn't be liable. That being said, we can, with permission from the homeowner, the town can go in and remove the tree, or clean it up, or do something to mitigate the risk. And the town could pay all of that, a portion of that, or none of that. Um, and it's just a question of what precedent do you set? Because if we really feel it's important to get done, uh, we could go forward and, and, and pay all of it. Um, but then other people may say, I've got a tree on my property, that looks like it's gonna fall in the town right away. Um, and so it's just about precedent setting. All that being said, I'm not devoting too much energy or met thought to it, because I, like I told Kevin, it's his budget, it's his decision, and he, I, he kind of said, you think what I'm saying is reasonable, and I said, I think it's reasonable, but it's his budget and his jurisdiction, so not my firm, not my pigs.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, I'm good with this. I'll make a motion to pass the minutes of one eighteen twenty twenty four as amended.
Second. Uh, we'll call a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, so that's unanimous approval of those minutes. And move on to January twenty-third.
Rock and roll. There, there were, where, why does the duplication keep going?
We'll call, we'll ask Microsoft, maybe we'll be all, Microsoft call this, and we'll not.
And I really don't understand what the no apostrophe T is, it's so weird.
It just was not, instead of what?
I know, but it's rare, when I merge all of your changes, it doesn't realize, you know, one of you already made it. He said those, that was just one person?
Well, okay, here's what I did, Susan.
Yeah? It's, it's, don't worry about it. I, it, it doesn't, it's just weird, it's confusing when it shows up with the extra apostrophe.
If Jess had sent it to me fifteen hours before, I would have cleaned that up. Which the other two decided when you weren't here, Jess, and that if it comes after three, I shouldn't include it in the meeting.
In the minute, the minutes, even.
Yeah, because it doesn't give me a chance to clean them up.
Good morning.
Like, we can just, we just postponed, if they don't come in in time to do this meeting, then we do the next meeting.
You, so, we can do that, if that's what you want. I will say I, what, eighty percent of the time that I submit minute edits, they're within the hour leading up to the minute.
But I'm usually in here, so I don't get them.
Yes, that's true, but I would say it's like eighty, it's rare that I send minutes not right before the meeting.
Okay. Got it. I mean, in my, just a question of your work schedule, I get it.
Well, no, it's not, like, I could do it the night before, but some things, like in preparation for a meeting, minutes can be done right before the meeting. Sometimes, if you gotta follow up with.
I think the problem with doing minutes right before the meeting is just like, if we're trying to get three people's
Yeah.
corrections all in there in a fit here and away, that makes it pretty hard on whoever's doing the collection of everything.
Well, thankfully today I was in around five and pulled, and gave Melissa a heads up. So she knew that this was in the pipeline. And here we are, we're gonna be only one week behind.
Yeah.
So the ebb and flow of the minutes. Okay, on January twenty-third?
Pardon? I'm so far only on page two.
Oh.
Yep, I'm good then.
I'm good. Um, I will move that we approved the minutes of January twenty-third as amended.
Second.
And we'll call a vote.
Yes.
And yes, so that's unanimous approval. Do we have any other comments and questions, questions from the public or unanticipated business before we adjourn?
Nope.
We'll meet with the finance committee next, next week, and right now, we'll vote on adjournment.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, so unanimously approved, the meeting is adjourned at seven twenty-four.
Wow.